Why am I starting that? Oh, here it is. T-335, page 107, line 7. Okay. Where's my script? Ready? Good afternoon, colleagues and members of the audience. My name is Ed Riceinger. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We are here this afternoon to conduct our sixth voting session on text amendments to City Council Bill 12-0152, which is transform Baltimore zoning. Electronic files are being made available on the City Council's website. The draft amendments can be downloaded from the bill file page by inputting the following link into your web browser, which is https://baltimore.legisstar.com. A copy of the draft amendments has also been placed in the bill folder located in the Executive Secretary's Office, who is Dehona Austin at City Hall. I encourage everyone to visit the City Council's website to stay updated on the bill. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the draft amendments, page by page. We will not vote on as much as we can during today's session in two hours. Public testimony will not be allowed during the voting session. City agencies may be questioned about particular amendments being discussed by the committee. A grand rule is please turn off your cell phones to give courtesy respect to the committee to vote. We have, to my far left is Councilwoman Nick Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To his right is Councilman Bill Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Across from Councilman Henry is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. Second to my left is Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton.
Yes, sir.
To my immediate left is Councilman Jim Craft, the vice chair of the committee.
Thank you.
We're here joined by Angela Gibson, representing Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake. Also, to my left is Mr. Nick Blendy, also representing Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake.
Yes, sir.
We have, to my far right, is Mr. Paul Clement. And also, Mr. Chair Kuntz, who is representing President Lawrence Blackwell. To my immediate right is Senator Kuntz, who is the chairperson of the city of Baltimore.
You would like to contact the committee. Please, Mayor Correspondence to the Office of Council Services, attention to Jennifer Coats, located 100 North Holiday Street, Baltimore, Maryland 212.
Email Jennifer at Jennifer.Coats@BaltimoreCity.gov.
The committee has received handouts today, this afternoon, from the Maryland Retailers Association, the Baltimore Development Work Group, and also South Baltimore Business We will start today on, we did title, we worked on Title V, so today we are working, we are on T-335, which is on page, T-335, which is on page 107, line 7. And that is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is proposed legislation that takes up the following numbers on our sheets. Okay. T-335, T-336, T-337, and then skipping down, T-344.
T-344.
And I would like to move to defer to the next meeting. I'm working with Ms. Kuntz on some amendments to this, and I want to be able to present a clean copy.
Second. Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilman Henry to defer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. They are deferred.
So, Mr. Chairman, something else.
Yes, you've got a, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's T, that's 344, right?
344.
344.
344, okay.
Do you have a question or a statement, Councilwoman, because next one is the president's, T-338. Do you want to?
No, I would never get, no, I would never interfere with the president's motion, but I would like a chance to go back to T-328, which was deferred. We have language, SBBA. We have language for the MIZAD conditions.
Wait, wait, hold on for one second. You want to go back to 3, T-328?
Yes, sir. But please let me wait until the president's motion has been.
Page 104.
104, I don't know what lines, but let me just go back.
What is that line? 104.
Oh, it's, yeah.
What is the line?
Just give me one second, please.
What is it?
I think it's line 9 to 33.
Line 9 to 33. Okay, I got it. You guys got it?
Let me see. This would be, you all have the sheets. I would like to move this amendment from SBBA.
Second.
I have no idea what it says.
So, this is SBBA?
Yes, sir. I'm moving the approval of.
SBBA.
SBBA. The MIZAD criteria submitted by SBBA.
Second, moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilman Henry. Did you move that?
Middleton?
He can second.
Okay, all right. Okay, Councilman Riceinger votes yes. Councilman Craft?
He's going to ask what it means.
Yes.
Councilman Craft is yes. Councilwoman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. So, we have six yes with one absent, and Text 328 is passed.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, I was hoping Councilman Craft could speak to this, because the second page of the amendment includes a paragraph that we amended yesterday, where I believe we changed in Roman numeral 2, 1, 2, 3, 4, in the fifth line down, we changed director planning must seek an opinion to director planning must obtain an opinion. I just want to be clear that when we passed this, we're only passing the changes on page 104, and not the language on 104A, which would then eliminate what we just did yesterday. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, everybody on the same page? Okay, we're now on.
Can we vote 338? Councilman President?
They don't want me to yell on that.
We didn't do that.
We are now on T-338, page 107, line 12. This is the president's amendment. Yes, Councilman Craft?
Mr. President, I move the president's amendment, 338.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Who's second?
Mary Pat.
Okay. Moved by, seconded by Councilwoman Clark. Councilman Riceinger votes yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft is yes. Councilwoman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. So, we have six yes with one absent. Now, we are on, Councilman Craft, we are on T-333, page 107, line 2634. This was a question, I think you had.
Well, actually, we had had a discussion, and this, on the previous page, 106, we had talked about lines 19 to 21. Each sign must be posted at a prominent location near the sidewalk or public right of way, so that it is visible to passing pedestrians and motorists. And each sign must be at least three feet by four feet in size. And I had suggested at the time that we would use the language that's used in the building code, because I thought that that was clearer language. And the language in the building code says, the sign must be at least four feet wide and three feet high, written in black lettering, at least two inches high, on a yellow background, conspicuously posted, clearly visible and legible to the public, and with the bottom of the sign not less than five feet, nor more than 10 feet, above ground level, and maintain in good condition. This says until the time of demolition or moving, but until the time expires or whatever. But the reason we did all that before was if you, we had that five to 10 feet, because if it was over the street where people were parked, and the car was, and the sign was just sitting on the ground, people would never see it. So, I would move to amend both page 106, lines 19 to 21 and 25.
19 to what?
19 to 21 and 25, and replace them with the language of section 105.9, .2, .1, .1 of the building code. And that's actually on page 21, lines 22 to 28 of the building code.
Mr.?
Use the microphone, Councilwoman.
Mr. Chairman, I feel obliged to, not knowing this was going to be raised, but I do feel obliged to ask if you might accept a friendly amendment that came from a constituent to me just two days ago. And that was that such signs have contrasting colors, like red, for the date and the address, because that's what you could see and maybe find out about.
Well, they are, the lettering has to be black, and the background has to be yellow. That's what the sign says.
Okay.
Right.
Is this for?
That's what this, that is what the code, that's what it already says in the housing code.
I'm sorry, which category of signs are these? What are we advertising here?
These are the number amount of posted signs for zoning map or creation and modification of a PUD, and also for variances or conditional uses.
Yellow.
Yeah.
Well, how about red print for just two things on it? The date and the address. Because if you're driving by or jogging by, that's what you'll see if it's in contrasting color.
Red, people who are colorblind cannot discern red.
Okay, how about, I know they can't.
Is better, I think, from an ADA perspective. We don't have our expert here on that, but we've heard a number of complaints about red.
Okay, I got you. I know that blue is, anyway. So, I tried, and I'll probably come back and try again after I talk to the chair of the Planning Commission, who would be an expert witness.
Okay. Housing, you want to be sponsored out of you?
Not representing housing, it was Councilman Henry made the point. All right. So, I would move to, I would move to delete paragraphs 19, 21, I mean, section, lines 19 to 21 and 25 on page 106, and replace them with the language of the requisite section in the building code. And, okay.
Use the building code?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Wait for her to finish.
It's page 21, Carol, page 21, lines 23 to 28 in the building code.
Okay.
Okay, this is something new.
It's actually, we can incorporate it under T-333. It can be under T-333.
I'm a little nervous about that. Hearing, it'll be okay. Because T-333 is the corresponding, is going to go on the next page, the same thing.
Moved by Councilman Craft, do we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Henry. Councilman Riceinger votes yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft votes yes. Councilwoman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Come on.
It's a vote.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yes. We got six yes with one absent. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, the second part of that is on page 107, lines 28 to 30, and lines 34. Move to strike those lines and to replace them with the same lines from the building code.
That's T-334, right? Is that T-333?
We can keep it under 330, or make it 333A.
Or what's, is it T-334?
Is this new language?
This new language?
I'm just, it's the same, it's, I think we can just make it 3, it's the same thing.
Make it 3A?
Yeah, make it 333A.
We can make it 3A.
333A.
We got it, we finished.
Okay, so this will be, this will be 333A, and Councilman Craft, you made a motion, do we have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Middleton. Riceinger votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft, yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. Motion passes. Now, we are on T-334.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Craft?
Mr. Chairman, I would move T-334, T-605, T-339, T-341, T-340, and T-343. The president's amendments.
Councilman Craft moves. Henry seconds, and this is 334, 604, 339, 341, 340, and 343.
605.
And 605.
Yes, yeah. Not 604, 605.
605.
Right.
For vote, Riceinger votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. Okay, now we are on, this is planning, Laurie, this is T-342.
Yeah, we can withdraw that. It's covered elsewhere.
You withdraw? Move to withdraw. So, moved by Councilman Craft, seconded by Councilwoman Middleton. Withdrawal. All those in favor, if you all say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. T-342 is withdrawn.
Did that one? Did we do 343 on the president? Did we do that? Did we do that? Run T-345.
They run 345. Councilwoman Clark, T-345, page 110, line 2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Basically, if I can get myself there. There are restrictions in the code that for use, for use permit issuances, and when they are required. When is a use permit required? So, I have amendments to that under 340, T-345. Number two on page 110 says, use for any purpose that you have to have one of these for any purpose, any previously vacant land. And I'm saying, as an add-on, except community managed open space garden and community space, community managed open space farm. So, I'm saying that you have to have a use permit when you, if the land has been vacant. But I'm making an exception for those two categories needing to get a use permit. Basically, that's what I'm doing.
Second.
Yeah, I got to listen, because they're talking about.
The question, is this currently a community garden, or a potential for a new community garden?
I'm sorry, what?
Just ask her.
Yeah, what's your question?
Is this when a vacant lot is becoming a community garden?
Yeah.
Or a community garden becomes something else?
No, no, no. This is when a vacant lot is finding itself becoming a community managed open space, either garden or farm.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to save them some money. Whoever they are, not me, because I don't dig in, I'm not a gardener.
So, Councilwoman Clark, you move it. Councilman Henry, seconded. Councilman Riceinger votes yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft is yes. Councilwoman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yes.
Thank you, everybody, thanks.
We have six yes with one absent.
Um.
Wait, hold on for one second.
All right, that's, wait a minute, I got to make sure.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Clark, we are now on T-346.
This whole thing was approved, so, um, ah, oops.
Page 110. Is this a pair? So, also, I see.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, that's a pair. I'm just, no, no, that, you did what I needed. You did what I asked for.
You withdrawing that one?
Yeah, let me just make sure I'm doing the right thing, sorry. There, I do have one other thing about community managed open space.
I'm asking, is this a pair where you need to withdraw?
It is different. I was, I did add another one, and I'd like to offer it as a separate amendment. Now, this is when you have to have a use permit. I'm sorry.
I'm not voting for this.
No. Use for any, I'd like to move this, which is listed as three under requirements to have a use permit.
Councilwoman Clark, this is, you're on, what, T-346? Is this?
I'm afraid I am.
Okay, then what about T-3, T-709 and T-714? Are they all the same?
No, they're ours.
They're yours? Okay, planning, okay. All right, thank you. So, Councilwoman Clark, go ahead.
Thank you. Going back to what we were doing a minute ago, use permits are required in certain conditions. I'm adding one.
To what line?
Use, oh, I'm sorry, well, it doesn't exist, so it would be coming in under line, oh, God, where is it? It would be coming in under line, after line three on page 110.
After line three?
After line three.
So, you got one and two, so you're adding?
I'm at, yeah, I'm adding a new three.
You're adding line three.
So, that will require numbers to shift.
Isn't that the same as four, two? Isn't that the same as lines five and seven? Is use permit is required to occupy any building that is subject to an outstanding vacant building notice?
I have unoccupied in here, too. It's a big difference.
How? They're both listed.
You got to use the microphone.
Unoccupied for more than a year, and, I mean, or subject to an outstanding vacant building notice.
I think both are covered by lines five, six, and seven.
Okay, I guess I was just rephrasing to make it a little clearer about the structure. I don't want somebody issuing a use permit for a, sort of that limbo property that is unoccupied, but nobody can, but people are living in it, but they don't belong in it, that kind of place, and for one that is structurally not up to code. to code, which happens. So if you think that the language that is already there sufficiently covers that, I'll be happy to withdraw, but if and I, is there someone from housing?
Yeah, I think it is. Who wants to?
I want, I don't want a use permit being.
Let Sharon, Sharon, you want to weigh into this?
Yeah, I don't think it's needed. I think it's covered because a vacant building notice is issued when a house is structurally unsound. So I think what you're getting at is covered with these lines already.
I'll accept that and withdraw this.
Okay.
I withdraw.
So, okay.
I'm withdrawing T 346.
T 346, moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Henry to withdraw. All those in favor of withdrawal say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
I did these things so long.
Withdrawn? Mosby? Okay, so now, now we are on T 709, planning department.
We're deferring to law submitted language, I believe, on this. It's a replacement of that section that covers this issue.
I think we're going to take care of all the changes to this particular section in set, T 715. So we can withdraw 709.
Are you withdrawing 709?
Yes, yes.
You withdraw 709?
Yes, we're going to take care of it in 715.
Okay, moved by Councilman Craft to have a second. Seconded by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor to withdraw say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and T 709 is withdrawn.
Which one do we read? Do we read this?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that this amendment has now been worked with the.
Well, we need to go to 714, right?
714 is a typo, but.
Typo, okay, so that's a technical, okay. Okay, thank you.
I mean, assume the committee agrees with that. There's a numbered discrepancy between the two lines and.
Okay, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you. So T 715, that's the President, Councilman Craft?
Yes, yes, Council, T 715 has been worked on by planning and law and adopted as a President's amendment. I would move it as a President's amendment.
Moved by Councilwoman Craft, seconded by Henry.
Question?
Question to the motion, Councilwoman Clark, go ahead.
What is it? What does it do? What is it?
Would ask Ms. Cunst from the President's office.
Ms. Cunst, you want to answer that?
Good morning, Your Excellency, and Kara Cunst, on behalf of Council President Young. This amendment was introduced as part of the Council President's package back at the April 2014 work sessions, but it wasn't copied into the chart correctly, which is why we're handing out the language again. So this does essentially what the chart amendment says it does in terms of rewriting the zoning interpretation section as a zoning consultation session and adding language. That zoning consultations are meant to be non-binding, and that written summaries will include a statement about the fact that they are non-binding, and that these are just consultations, not any sort of a decision-making process that Jeff Veal or whoever becomes the next zoning administrator would do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Council vice singer votes yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is a yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is a yes. Middleton? Middleton is a yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is a yes, so we have six yes with one absent. Motion passes. We're now on, uh. T 3, Councilwoman Clark, this is T 347.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Basically, so when I was working on community managed open space, a lot of the people who want to do community managed open space or already do it complained about the cost of moving into vacant lots to develop them for a garden or for a farm. And one of the problems is that it might look to us like a big vacant lot, but if you look at the plats of the city, it is several small lots that are all contiguous. And so this amendment permits people who have community managed open space garden and community managed open space farm to pay fees for, when applying for the use, but, and submit applications, but for a single lot as long as the multi-lots are contiguous. Move it.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Middleton. Moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Middleton.
Okay, moved by Clark, seconded by Middleton. That's 347. Vice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft, yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark, yes. Henry?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You will explain your vote?
I actually want to know if there's any way in which I can hear what Nicholas was trying to say before we complete the vote. Is there, is there, is there a parliamentary process to allow for that?
I'm consolidating the.
Okay. I vote yes.
Okay, all right. If any of the agencies have a question, just put it to the Chair so we can talk to the committee. Councilman Henry says yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yes. We have six yes with one absent. Motion carries on 347. That takes care of Title VI.
Five.
Title V. See how fast we're trying to do this, though? Okay, now we are on. We're now on Title VI, which is zoning districts, maps, and profiles.
Hey, Pat, do you have a page of amendments for this? For Title VI?
There's some on the agency page that we handed out. There's some agency language on what we handed out. Title VI?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're not, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, okay.
We're looking for agency.
No, I just asked, I was just asking. I was looking, I was looking at the sheet tonight. Okay.
351, 54. Oh, yeah, I just wanted to comment on 692, if that's okay.
Okay, are we ready? Okay. Okay, we are on Title VI. We're now on T 62, which is. You want to respond to that?
Yes, I think there's a couple asks here in 692 from the Remington Neighborhood Alliance. And the, one part of the request is to define overlay to make it clear. We think that's probably a good idea, and we will get back to you with language. I think it should go probably in definitions, then may need to be cross-referenced here, but.
Move to defer 692.
Okay. Do you have a second with Councilman Henry? All those in favor to defer to T 692, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. T 692 is deferred. Okay. Councilwoman Clark?
Ah, there it is.
Councilwoman Clark, we're on T 348.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the committee, I would just move to delete the.
348 was withdrawn.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was withdrawing. Did you withdraw that?
Wait, wait, wait a minute.
That was on your sheet. You were drawing.
Yes, correct. I'm sorry, I noted that way, but.
That was in the list that we brought in.
Thank you, Councilman Henry. So now we're on, what, T 349? Councilwoman Clark?
Takes the village.
Okay, page 114, line 28.
Yes, it is, and it is a motion to delete the entire title, Inclusionary Housing Overlay District. I think we discussed this actually. And it's like, what is, the notion is, every place is and should be an inclusionary housing district, and there's not any on a map, so could we just remove it so it's not confusing?
Just by way of background, it was, it was a carryover from the current code, and I think law would just need to weigh in on if it affects. It essentially allowed the implementation of the current law, and that's why it was needed there, because you had to record, if there was a zoning change, a way to record that that zoning change was subject to inclusionary housing. But I think law has looked further into it.
But the Law Department, if we defer this, I mean, if we delete this, will this have any kind of legal ramifications?
I don't believe so, no.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you. So Councilwoman Clark, we need a second. You moving on this?
Yeah, I have a second. I have a second.
Okay, Clark moves. Henry seconds. We are, Council vice singer votes yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft is yes. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. T 349 moves. I just want to say that we are joined by the Dean of Counsel, Councilwoman Ricky Spector.
Mr. Chairman, I move 350.
Okay, moved by Councilman Craft, seconded by Councilwoman Middleton.
Just for the record, it should be DOT now, not.
It's changed since then.
In the draft between the hearing, between the drafting and the hearing and the voting session, it has changed twice, so it should be DOT, not.
Okay.
And hurry up and vote, because.
Right. I said, because it's going to be housing tomorrow morning.
Right. The agency de jour. Marcia.
I think it's kind of, who knows who, you know?
I move.
Moved, seconded by Councilwoman Middleton. Vice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We got six yes with one absent. Absent, motion passes.
Yeah, I've got the lang, the language is on the sheet for 350.
Okay, now we are on T 3, Councilman Craft, this is T 352, page 116, line 1.
Right. This was a question I posed, and I never got an answer for.
Yes, we have it. It's on our sheet. The answer is yes. It is mapped, and the, we agree that maybe there should be the definition added, and the definition is on the second page of your agency language or agency wording, and it says a pierhead is a line in a.
What page are we, what are you talking about?
We gave out a four-page handout that says agency amendments wording.
Wait a minute.
10-7, 2015.
Hold on, I got so many pieces of paper.
I know, we all do.
You know, so give me a second.
I have extras if.
10-7?
Here's extras.
Is that in this paperclip of things? Is that in the paperclip for today? Okay. That's why we don't have it. Okay. So this is.
Oh, the anniversary.
What amendment is this?
This is, it's down on the second page, about midway through, and it's your amendment number 352, T 352. And I'm not sure it actually belongs at this location, though, since this is where it's used, it could be defined here.
I would, I would move that we.
But this is the proper language for a pierhead.
I would move Amendment T 352, and that it subsequently be moved into wherever the proper place is.
Certainly.
Okay, moved by Councilman Craft, seconded by Henry. Councilman Rice, I mean, Rice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is. Branch is, uh. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Yes. We got six yes with one absent. The motion passes.
I think the next one is.
Next one is, Councilman Henry, this is T 351, page 116, line 26.
Pardon? Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. We, I believe we've already agreed that telephone booths and pedestals are no longer essential. No, no, I'm saying we should just move forward, so I moved the removal of telephone booths and pedestals from the list of exempt essential services.
Okay, so you're deleting number five?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, moved by Councilman Henry, seconded by Councilwoman Clark. Vice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Yes, Middleton?
Yes.
Yes, Mosby?
Yes.
Yes, we got six yes with one absent. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, on the agency, we're not disagreeing with that in any way, but there was a combination of amendments, including T 351, 54, 53, and a future 1, 915, which we combined onto the same handout sheet that you just voted on with pierheads. It starts at the bottom of that page to clarify that section with an insert that is cross-referenced to Title II as well. We have, we have all that language. It would combine.
Could you?
I can walk through it if.
Could you walk, start over again?
Sure.
Because we just got it, so.
Yeah, so there were, in our observation, there were a number of related amendments to subtitle four of Title VI, which speaks to what's exempt from zoning. And the agencies reviewed and combined that language to. And, uh, the agencies reviewed and combined that language to what you see here. And, in addition, um, we worked on an issue that was brought up by transportation in terms of the rules of zoning in the right-of-way. So, what you're looking at is, uh, are those changes...
Do you remember what you gave us a little while ago?
Yes.
What page are you on?
This, it starts on the bottom of the second page and goes into the third page.
So, on the bottom, is that T three fifty-one, three fifty-four, and T three fifty-three?
Yes, it combines all of those, and, and I left out the T there for nine fifteen. Uh, but we realized that the issue of transportation, the right-of-way, goes to this place. So, um, the, the first piece is to, uh, needs to be actually inserted in Title II that just says, except, so it cross-references, all it is is a cross-reference to this location. Insert the underlined, "Except as provided in six four oh one. This code applies to all land uses structures, et cetera." So that it tells the reader that the code applies everywhere, except, and then you go to this section, and we outline this section. And, um, this has clarifying language, including, uh, the items related to Department of Transportation's need to work in the right-of-way, as well as something we picked up earlier, which is to permit the automobile charging stations, Councilman Henry's deletion of the telephone booths, and, um, uh, I think we had the car and bike sharing in there before. Um, so those are essentially the changes, and, um, so... Number nine is new, yes. And that was something that the committee caught earlier, that, you know, again, this is a new element, you know, these charging stations, um, and they are typically on the sidewalk, by the curb, that sort of thing.
Yeah, Councilman Hen- Craft, um, Clark? Use the microphone.
You know...
Microphone.
Thanks. Question, or comment? I, I like you got the charging stations in there, um, and that we got the telephone booths out. But, then it gets, it gets vague, um, and it worries me a bit. Ten and eleven. I don't, twelve, I, I can't quite make out, but, in other, in other words, ten, similar installations and equipment or accessories of a public utility or governmental service. I don't know. And then, eleven, any installation, structure, equipment, or accessory that is owned by a government entity...
And located in the right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
That's essentially to allow transportation to do their job, uh, in that right-of-way. Whether that is a streetlight, a sign, you know, that sort of thing.
And ten exists in here already. What is ten on this sheet exists as eight on page one sixteen.
Okay. It's just very, it's, it's, I don't care. I mean, basically, I just don't want to get caught into something odd that we can't even think about in advance, and there it is.
I get it.
But, sure.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Henry, you want to add into this?
Yeah, the, the one issue that I would raise now, and I, I appreciate planning spelling out this section in, in greater detail. Um, when we last went through this section, we had not yet, um, spent the level of, uh, both individual and group conversations that we have since had with BG&E about utilities. And my question is whether, given that we are going to be taking up a lot of very specific issues involving utilities that I think have been carefully negotiated with a number of, um, of parties, I'm hesitant to give what feels like might be a little bit of a blank check here in the similar... Well, what I wanted to ask is if the planning would be willing to accept as a friendly amendment just removing a public utility?
I think we'd rather defer and have the more comprehensive conversation. Um, but I guess what we would request is that this be seen as a sort of substitution for that subtitle there, in, in its entirety.
If we're going to defer for that, then I would...
This amendment doesn't exist right now.
Well, it is, it does in that it combines a couple others on the list.
But it doesn't exist as a formal amendment right now, because these are other amendments. This is a substitute.
Yeah, this is, this is a request.
This is a request for substitute. It's, it's not a formal amendment at this time. You're requesting to substitute this for those other three amendments.
And actually a fourth one, T nine fifteen.
Right, yeah, for those other four amendments. So what we're saying is, we can talk about this more.
Well, could...
I would rather defer than piecemeal it.
So, so I'm, I, I, I get that, I have no objection to that. What I would specifically ask, be part of that conversation, is I would want to know if law would be okay with limiting governmental service to specifically Baltimore City? Um, you know, whether we have the power in this to limit that to our governmental stuff and not be giving a blank check to the states and the, and the Fed?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Councilman, Craft?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, given that, that particular discussion with this recommended substitute, we've already passed T three fifty-one, but I would move at this time that we would defer T three fifty-four, T three fifty-three, and T nine fifteen pending the discussion.
I, um, I have a half of an amendment that I'd like to, um, go forward with, let me, I, I'll... I will oblige you guys, if you want, but I wanted to, um, I wanted to pass the amendment about the, I had the same telephone amendment as my colleague, and I also had, as part of that amendment, I'd like to break it out, is, um, just amend the appropriate tables to make this use, that is, that pedestal phone, um, conditional with zoning board approval in all districts. I mean, I know we're doing tables later...
But we're not, we're not going on tables yet.
Okay, so, could we, um...
Huh?
Could we note it as deferred to the tables?
Yeah.
Well, that would, I'd be happy with that. I don't want to lose these telephone things. They might come back. And I don't want it, and I don't want them in certain main streets.
Let me ask you this, regards to Councilman Henry. You're looking to defer in three fifty-four, three fifty-three, and nine fifteen?
Correct.
Correct? Okay, so, with his, with his concerns, are you going to bring, are you going to be meeting with the, with the, with the committee or Councilman Henry regards to those concerns? How are you going to work this? We just don't want to defer it, I mean, which the...
Who's going to do this?
Uh?
Who's going to do it?
Yeah, yeah.
I would recommend that Victor...
Well, Councilwoman, Clark, we have a question on the floor, yes, Councilman Henry?
Well, um, what I was, what I was going to suggest is that, since the remaining issues, amendments that we would be deferring so that we can have this conversation appear to be Councilwoman Clark's, why don't we leave this as the administration working with Councilwoman Clark on this, and they can come back jointly with language at a future voting session? Uh, on, on this. And I, I'll, I'll be happy to be, you know, to, to hear what comes out of that. I just wanted to raise the issue about the governmental...
Yes, I'm not sure we understand what the issue is, but...
It's the language?
You, well, I'm... I'm trying to remember who requested that this be deferred.
You were, you were discussing utilities and the language, is that the...
I, I, I raised the issue of removing the words "a public utility", and the response I got was, "We would rather talk about that before we do that." So, I'm saying, okay, go, okay, go talk about that, and after you've talked about it, come back and see me. How's that? And we'll talk about it together before the next voting session?
Okay.
Okay.
So that would, so I just want to get clarity. So that would be planning, the Law Department, and who else? DOT?
DOT.
Is going to meet with...
Councilman Henry.
Councilman Henry. Okay, yeah, okay, we got... Okay, so we have that... Okay, so what, what's this being deferred, right? Okay, so I have a motion to defer. Who moved, who made, Councilman Craft moved for defer, Councilman Henry seconded to defer three fifty-four, three fifty-three, and nine fifteen. Voice, yeah. All those, all those who favor to defer, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, it's deferred.
Three fifty-four, three fifty-three.
Those, the questions asked, those numbers are three fifty-four, three fifty-three, and nine fifteen.
It's back, um...
Nine fifteen is way at the end, it was put on the record by Department of Transportation as a request. But it, it doesn't, it didn't have a specific text reference, it was just a, an issue. And so when we...
In Title fifteen.
We met, we realized this is the place.
Okay. End of what?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, oh, okay.
Can I, can I move to defer T eight forty-one?
What is it? Okay, Councilman Henry defers eight forty-one, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those who favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, eight forty-one is deferred.
Title seven?
Okay, we are now on Title seven, which is open space in environmental districts. A Title, Title seven. We have, uh... Okay, three fifty, three fifty-seven on Title seven. Councilwoman Clark, that's page one seventeen, line thirteen.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, um, I have an amendment on, uh, line thirteen, uh, of page one seventeen, and it is, um, it's two words, "And private." "The purpose of open space zoning district is to enhance the quality of life for the city residents by permanently preserving public and private open space, blah blah." Um, I'd like to move the amendment to add "and private" to that definition.
Okay, Clark, do I have a second?
Private.
Do we...
You do. You, people own lots.
Is there, is there a motion on this second one?
The Guilford Association owns lots, for example.
If I don't hear a second, it's going to die.
Well, yeah, you...
Can we let her talk more about it, without a second being asked?
So you have a question?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, I'm, I'm trying to grasp what the, the broader point of this is. If you have privately owned, if you have a privately owned lot, if this doesn't say preserving public and private, does that mean you can't zone that private lot open space?
No. Well, I, I guess it does, because...
Sure.
There, there are a number of lots, for, well, for example, the Guilford Association in both of our districts own park lots. They own lots that are, are parks. And they're privately owned by the Guilford Association. I wasn't, I also am thinking of lots throughout my district that are open space, but not owned by the city. Some of them are just plain tax sale lots that nobody ever bought the certificate for, and then grass grew, and they're a community garden. For example, right there on Homestead Street is a community garden called the, um, Harvest, and it's privately owned. It's in a, it's, the city has allowed the, them to garden there for years and years and years now, but I promise you, it, well, it might by now have gone into the Green Space Trust, uh, which took title. But that's private in itself. So many of these vacant lots that are being gardened, uh, there is a nonprofit called Baltimore Greenspace. And what they do, because the community can't afford to own it, nobody owns it, they don't want somebody to show up from the grave to claim an old property and build a ten-story high-rise, so they, after two years, they're eligible to apply to Baltimore Greenspace a 501(c)(3) that housing helped develop, and they, that nonprofit will, will close title with the help of the city and own it for the gardeners, so they don't have that responsibility. So, I'm thinking about all those places that are private that should be zoned open space.
Right, he has the question. Councilman Henry?
Right, so, okay, so, then, just looking further down this subtitle, both, both in regulatory intent and in application, it says, "Protect and promote public and private open space," and the open space district applies to public and private open space. So, I guess I would, I guess I would ask the planning department, is there some reason why it doesn't say "public and private open space" in the general purpose section?
We have no objection to the amendment. There's, there's no reason it doesn't say private, but I, just for the record, I think some of the issues that Councilwoman Clark is bringing up are really map issues. And I would urge the council, again, no objection to the word there, but as you review the maps, um, it would be a...
Mapping issue.
Mapping issue. We do have the Guilford lots, they requested to be the OS zone, and that was our recommendation. But I think to, uh, willy, willy-nilly apply the OS zone on private property...
Over the objection of private property owner.
Over the objection of the property owner would put the city in a bad position.
But that would be a mapping issue, that wouldn't be a text issue.
A mapping issue, so adding that word is not a problem.
Okay, second.
Okay, so, with that said and done, do I have, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Henry, we're taking a vote. Councilman Reissinger votes no, Councilman Craft?
No.
Councilman Craft, no, Councilman Branches absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes, Councilman Henry?
No, I'm sorry, yes.
Henry is yes?
Yes.
Middleton? Middleton is no.
No.
Uh, Mosby?
Where did you come from?
Mosby is no. We have two yes, with four no, and one absent. Motion fails. We are now on... Three...
I don't see anybody's name on it.
So we are now on three...
Oh.
Three fifty-nine?
Oh, it's Albury and John Laria. So...
Three fifty-nine, that's Craft.
Right. And we had discussed this, um, during the hearing, during our, um, hearing session, and...
So, I just figured on making...
I raised the question at the time...
But it's happening.
Um, that this, I believe that this was governed by the Charter that was, um, these are already in the powers of the Charter, that everything that's going on within the, um, within the public parks are controlled by the Director of Recreation and Parks. So, we don't need to have this section in here, because the Director of Recreation and Parks has all this power under the Charter. So I would move, um, to delete lines thirteen through fifteen.
Oh, I do that.
So you, okay, so, you're, you're moving to delete lines thirteen and fif- through fifteen?
Yes.
So it's, okay, so it's moved by Councilman Craft, we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Henry. Reissinger votes yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft, yes, Branches... Craft, yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Oh, yes.
Yes, okay. Councilwoman Clark is yes. Council, Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yellen.
Mosby, yes, yes. So, we have, uh, six yes with one absent.
Inside the building here?
Now, we are on, uh, 361. That's you, Craft.
Yep.
Page 119, line 30.
Right, line 30, um, these reference the new floodplain maps, and the date contained in the bill is February 2nd, 2012, but I believe they're new maps since February 2nd of 2012?
Uh, yes, the, the council adopted some changes, and, um, if, if the committee is okay, I, I think we should work with law and review Subtitle III in general, since the council adopted numerous changes, and, and make sure that this is, uh, consistent. Uh, also, looking towards the future, uh, we know that, for example, FEMA does studies of these maps periodically, and it may be better to even, not even put a date as much as to say the most recent adopted maps.
Mr. Chair?
But if we could, um, have the time to review Subtitle III for consistency since introduction.
I, I was just going to call both colleague and Planning's attention to the fact that line 31 says "as revised or amended from time to time." So, there's already language in there that allows for the fact that those maps are going to be updated over the years.
I understand, but I think we should...
It may be best to take the date out, though.
And just make sure that we have the most recent one.
Exactly.
Okay.
But that, um, that said, 361 and 362 are mine, and they're both in Title III. So, I would move to defer them until such time as, uh, Planning and Law can, uh, review Title III. And, um, who else should be in that review?
Subtitle III.
Subtitle, yeah, Subtitle III.
Us.
Should Ms. Collins should be, should you guys be in the floodplain thing? No? Not at all? Okay. Don't you want to be in there? No, you sure? Can't you paddle over? All right.
We have, so you're deferring?
I'm, I move to defer 361 and 362.
And Henry? Okay, so, all those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. To defer? Where we at next? Is 360?
I think 360 will be covered by the same deferral.
It is?
Well, it's questioning the same section.
It's two questions, or what are you, it's a question, so what are you saying, Laura?
I think it would be answered as a result of our referral, our, our review of Subtitle III as stated in the deferral.
Move to defer 360.
Okay. Second by Councilman Henry. All those who favor to defer T 360, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. T 360 is deferred. T 363, Councilman Craft?
363, 364, and 365 were all things, questions that I had posed to Planning in one way or another with regard to this, um, and they were going to get some information from the state, and they were going to, um, check and clarify regarding assessments being verified. I don't know whether you guys have done any of that.
Uh, we did have, uh, the answer for, it was for 63, um, and 64, and I neglected to get 65. Um, but just so you know, ESTAT is used for the assessment, and, um, we would add the phrase "within the critical areas for the significant development," because that is sort of a term of art with the critical area. So, by qualifying that, that would handle that. Um, I do need to get the further information on the water use industries. So, we could look at those as a package rather than the one, if you prefer.
Okay. Now, I move to defer them pending a report back from Planning.
Second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. And 363, 364, and 365 is deferred. The last one is, um, I have T 660. Uh, is this a mix-up? I mean, who is this?
It says page 292.
Page 292?
Oh, there may be a typo, because I think where it says 7-513, I think that might be 17, and that's what got it in the wrong title.
So, this is Title 17?
I think this should be moved to Title 17.
Okay.
It's a sign.
All right, so we just, we won't deal with that. Um, where's the script? Okay, um, we are going to have to go on recess, because Councilwoman Clark has a televised hearing at 5:00, and she needs time to settle and prepare. So, our next voting session on 12-01-52, 3, Paul Moore, journey will be announced. I just want to remind everyone that the committee will hold a public hearing on map amendments October 8th, while Paul Moore, Paul Moore, will be located at 1400 West Paul Moore. Lane, thank you.